Meeting called to order. Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
We will please stand for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star-Ledger on January 7, 2021, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are now on to the special event applications.
The first application is from the gas company, and they are requesting to do a beach cleanup on October 16. Next is the Rocktober Clambake in Kennedy Park on October 15. Colt Drive in the Park will be on October 16 in Springwood Park, and this will be with Colt donations being accepted from 12 to 4:00 p.m., and then a Colt giveaway from 4 to 8:00 Wedding on Sixth Avenue Beach on October 24. And lastly, a small concert on St. John's Island on October 17. Are there any questions on the applications? If not, thank you.
Just a minute. Just a minute.
Yes.
We will now move on to items to be presented. We have the 2020 audit report by David Gannon, PFK O'Connor-Davies, Registered Municipal Accountant, and the city's auditor. And Joanne Booz, our CFO, will be attending.
Good evening, everybody. Just want to let you know we filed the audit on time this year. The state had pushed back the deadline because of all the issues they were having with pandemic and also with certain information coming from the state that has been delayed for pensions and OPAP. We received excellent cooperation from the city's staff. This was our firm's first year doing the audit, so it always takes little extra effort on both sides to be able to get the audit done, and we received excellent cooperation. So we thank them for that. We've issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That means that the city's financial statements are in accordance with those required by the Division of Government Services. Overall, we found the financial records of the city in excellent condition. Ms. Booz and her staff really do a fantastic job of maintaining the financial records of the city. Overall, we found that the city was in strong financial health. The city's fund balance and the current fund was $11.4 billion at the end of the year, which was a decrease from the prior year of $12.8 million. However, given the challenges of the pandemic, certain license revenue, court revenue was down statewide. You know, certain miscellaneous revenues that you had received in the prior year weren't quite to the level in the current year, but the city also refrained from taking on any special emergencies for revenue deficits, which a lot of municipalities throughout the state did take advantage of. But, you know, the financial health of the city was strong enough not to have to do that. Overall, the three utilities are all self-liquidating. Fund balance amounts from year to year were fairly consistent within all of them. The street utility fund had $273,000 of fund balance, the beach utility $4.7 million, the transportation utility $8.9 million. Collection rate, strong, you know, you've got accelerated tax sale, so it's 99.94%. Net debt was at 1.5% of assessed dilations, where 3.5% is the maximum allowed, so you're well under that. We didn't find any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. We noted two items that required corrective action. Several of the items from the prior year were corrected. There's two items that still remain. One's conforming orders, which is, you know, very typical of a lot of municipalities. It's not always easy with so many different departments purchasing. I am one item related item. So if anyone has any questions, everyone has an answer.
Let me just say, number one, thank you, and I'm going to thank you for some of your probably going to laugh at me. It's the fir-- I've been asking for this for eight years, that we get an audit report with pages numbered. So it's easy to refer to because, I mean, with a document this thick, when I say, well, go to this page, and the rest of the council are like, where the hell is it? So I mean, so thank you for the number. Little things make me happy.
Excellent.
Thanks.
I'm just looking at the application and there's things I didn't understand, and it's on the summary synopsis, the first page. Okay. What is the third charge? So the third charge is down payment through the capital.
$23,008.
So there was an emergency wish here that required a down payment on the capital ordinance because that wasn't budgeted for. An emergency was done, and that creates a deferred charge. So, you know, it's an emergency in one year. It gets deferred to be raised in the budget to the subsequent year that would be raised in the 2021 budget.
So the charge was created in previous year?
So appropriation was created in 2020 and will be raised in 2021. So at the time of the budget, it hadn't been anticipated. So after the budget was adopted, it was necessary, and therefore, since it was after the adoption of the budget, it then gets deferred and raised in the next year's budget. So that's not anything of significance that the city did anything wrong. It's more of this procedural of how these budgets work.
And the other one is unfunded capital lease of the city. $13,000 of the remaining was nonpaid.
Yes. So that was a capital lease that was, I don't remember what year it was entered into, but that was just the $13,000 of the remaining portion of the capital lease payment.
Is that from the CIA?
I believe so.
Yes. And that's done. We're finished with that.
Oh, if that's a good thing. Okay. That was it. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations, Joanne. You and your staff did a great job. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll take action on the two comments. The seat. Well, yes. That's right. We won't do it.
We are now on to matters from City Council.
So I just want to say thanks to everyone who organized and participated in the Fall Fun Fall Fest. It was a huge success in Sunset Park. Thanks to everyone who helped out, and I just want to also acknowledge the Asbury Park Dinner Table for providing the food for that as well. And I just want to do a shout out to Aiden and Louis Ardean. These two guys walked across the country, they started here in Asbury Park five months ago, to raise awareness and funds for food workers who were impacted by the pandemic. They walked 3,200 miles. They just ended up in San Francisco. They raised $70,000, and they are flying back to Asbury Park today, so I just wanted to shout out to them and acknowledge their hard work. And that's it. Oh, you know, one other thing. There's been some construction going on on Memorial Drive and on Sunset, so I want people to know that these are manufactured tree boxes that are going in, and they're going to help to filter stormwater before that stormwater enters our lakes. So these are good things that are going on.
Councilmember Clayton.
This one, I think the Asbury Park Police Department and Monmouth Ocean Police Athletic League is sponsoring an Asbury Park youth basketball clinic, and it begins October 23 through November 27, and you can register on Saturday, 10/16. And the games are going to take place at the Salvation Army of Asbury Park. So we're looking forward to our youth being able to participate. There is a registration fee that will be waived if necessary. And that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Kendall.
Sorry.
No, no, it's my turn. Nothing at this time. I think the lady said it all, exactly what I was going to say. Thank you, ladies.
I have nothing.
Mayor Moore.
The only thing I have is to add a little bit to what Eileen said as far as the Deal Lake Commission. Tomorrow, around 10:30 on Memorial Drive between Fifth and Sunset, they'll be putting one of these into the road, and the high school engineering class will be there to observe it, and so will I, so if anybody wants to come and see how this is being done, it's tomorrow at 10:30, I believe. Correct? Donna, you had like, you looked at me like you were surprised.
I was looking at Mr. Manzella.
Did you know about it?
No.
No.
I believe Mark is already in the room, but--
In Memorial?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I guess they're finishing, and they're having the high school engineering class over there tomorrow, I'm sorry. Peter Vakian told me. Thank you.
Matters from the city manager.
Nothing, Melanie.
Matters from the city attorney.
Nothing at this time, Melanie.
We are on to the public participation portion of the meeting. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is now open to the members of the public. Please go to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and each speaker will have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilwoman. We're in 1604 Brand Avenue in Asbury. I didn't have a chance to look at the resolutions, and I have questions, and if somebody could just briefly tell me. Resolution, you know, it's 2021. 431, if there's a cost factor, how much is it? Explain it to me pertaining to the permanent parking portal and license plate reader parking enforcement system. How much are we going to have to pay T and M, and what exactly are his professional services for that? For the new fire department headquarters, that's 431. 438, purchase of printers for the parking pay station, what's the cost factor on that? And authorizing the purchase of electrical supplies needed for South Boardwalk Project, 439. So it's 431, 437, 438, and 439.
And another--
And I'm remiss because I didn't pull up these resolutions, and I don't--
But you have a fourth one.
I'm sorry?
Third is four. 31, 37, 38, and 39.
Okay, yep. So Michael, do you want to answer 31 and 38?
Sure. I mean, we could pull up the cost for all of them.
Okay. Go ahead.
431.
So 431, the total amount--
431, the total amount is $138,042. Sorry, $138,042.06.
What? I'm sorry. What exactly is that?
That's for a new license plate reader system for our parking enforcement vehicles. The current system is three years old. The second one is 437.
437, right.
Thank you. There we go. It's $291,700 for T and M Associates for project management for the firehouse.
What's T and M doing for $291? What do the services entail?
So they're developing the site plan, so we have an architect already on retainer, but they're developing the site plan and site improvements associated with the construction of the firehouse. There'll be a new traffic signal, things like that, at the firehouse.
Where are they going to put the new firehouse?
So the proposed location for the firehouse is on Memorial Drive, adjacent to the train station in the parking lot.
We're still in the design phase?
We're in the designing phase. Which is the other one?
438.
What are the printers for?
So our parking pay station printers, we need some additional equipment to replace some of the printers in the parking pay stations. So that's $24,141.
But what are printers for?
They print receipts for the parking transactions.
Jesus. And this all comes out of the utility, not out of taxpayer dollars?
Correct.
And then that last one is electrical supplies.
So we're going to be replacing the boardwalk, and when we do that, we're going to put conduit underneath so we can put cameras on the light poles. So during this process, we're going to have the conduits purchased now, so when they rip up the boardwalk, we have them in place already.
If I saw this on a bill resolution, I would probably pass out. All right.
Thank you.
Sylvia, Sylvia, the Asbury Park Chamber. I have just a couple of quick things. One, we had our festival at the end of September. We were really excited to be back into doing events, and I was concerned definitely that we had changed our week, and we had changed our name. We used to be Oyster Fest, and now we're Asbury Fest. So I wasn't sure if people were going to find us, but evidently, our attendance was up spectacularly. People came, and, which kind of proves to me, what I've been saying all along, people come for Asbury, not for oysters. But I wanted to, A, thank our police, our EMT, and DPW for how hard they worked at our event. DPW, they're, these guys were unbelievable. Particularly, there's one guy that I just met, Russell, I think his name is, he's new. Fantastic. Our police and EMT, I know that we need to have them for having the special event, but I'm really, it's very comforting to know that they're there, and they take care of things for me that I don't think should be my call. There was a lady who said she was having an anxiety attack or a heart attack, and I'm like, again, not my call, but the EMTs came out, and they're in two seconds where there's another issue, and our event is very, it's a very calm, family-oriented event. There aren't many problems, but when there are, it's just very comforting to know that we have the support of the departments here. And speaking of which, I know that you guys know how hard Leisha Floyd works running recreation and coordinating these events, but I just wanted to go on the record and reiterate. She does such a magnificent job helping me to get our events off the ground and trying to coordinate. There's just so much going on, and everybody's trying to get in, and there's only so many dates. Another wonderful thing is our nonprofit partner this year was Coastal Habitat for Humanity, and we were able together to raise the biggest check I think I've ever written for a nonprofit partner. It was $8,000. I was for it. It was just such a magnificent weekend. The weather was perfect, and I thank you all for your support. And Mike Manzella, I know that sometimes you might have mixed things about scooters, but I have to thank you for introducing me to scooters, because we had zombie walk a week later, and I was able to manage that and scooter back and forth to see Porch Fest and not have to pay for parking and not have to find parking. It was magnificent, so I thank you for that. Have a good night, everybody, and stay safe.
Thank you.
Hi, Rita Moreno, 8th Avenue, 504 Eighth. I was just wondering, it's been a while. I don't know if everybody remembers the $50 million bond that we took out for the developer, and he was paying it back, 40/60, or whatever the percentage was. Does anybody know anything about that? Has that, is that finished now? We don't hear too much about the $50 million bond, whether the money was used for infrastructure. And now you're borrowing again for infrastructure at the beachfront. Why is that? Isn't that included in the bond? That's number one. Number two is, I don't, I don't understand how nonprofits work. Maybe somebody can explain them, but I don't know if this is a true story, that Interfaith Neighbors is building houses, but there's only going to be a couple that are going to be affordable, and the rest are full, fair market value? I don't know if that's a true story, but if it is, it's not right that they're doing that, because that's an area that needs rehabilitation. It's supposed to be right by the senior center. I have not seen the site, so I don't know, but I understand they're building townhouses there. And the other thing is, is the senior center finished? I mean, are people going back there? You don't hear much about it. I don't know too many seniors right now, but I was just wondering if that's what they were going to do. Is it finished? Is the building finished, or what? And did we have to pay for the damage that we got at the senior center? Being we have a condo there that we pay over $7,000 a quarter for? I mean, like, I don't know. So those are the three questions. Okay? Total out.
Okay. Well, Rita--
Yes.
You got to call me like, a day or two beforehand with some of these questions, because I honestly don't have a clue about the $50 million bond. If you're talking about the $68 million, the $58 million that--
That's the shelf.
The shelf, if that's what you're talking about, for the infrastructure for the waterfront, I don't know if that's the same thing or a different thing. So I mean, again, if Joanne can, does anybody know about a $50 million bond?
There's no $50 million bond. You're probably talking about the shelf that we draw down for the rab, and nothing's been drawn down recently. But Joanne can give you the exact number if you want to call her tomorrow.
What? I don't--
Okay, there is no $50 million bond. The only bond close to that number is the number that was set by previous councils as far as infrastructure for I-STAR on the beachfront, and I think it was 58 million, and they haven't spent close to half of that, and nothing's been drawn down lately. And you can call Joanne tomorrow, and she'll give you the exact numbers of what's been drawn down. As far as Interfaith, they are building, and they're building 20% affordable, which is what they're--
Well, I know, this council wasn't there when that was developed.
Right, so I mean--
But I know it is plain mistake, because it was a very big subject matter.
And as far as the senior center, I'm curious myself, a week or so ago, it was like, you know, the fire, we hired a company, the company said, we can't build it, we caught COVID. I'm like, what do you mean, you caught COVID? I mean, the mother, the wife and husband caught COVID, so we had to, last meeting, give a new contract, they're working on it, and Donna will tell you what percentage we're at now.
Yeah. Where, as the mayor said, we did award a contract to someone to repair it. After we awarded them the contract, the next day, they advised us that they had some issues with COVID and couldn't proceed with the contracts. We awarded it to another vendor who has been in there, and we anticipate completion by the end of the month, and this was covered under our insurance, and so it's being covered by insurance.
How much is the damage?
It's around $40,000.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right?
Okay.
I just want to say one thing about the $50 million bond. I mean--
It's not a bond, Rita.
It was a bond.
Okay.
I remember, I remember the whole thing, like it was yesterday, and they were supposed to pay back when all these buildings are going up, and I don't know what the percentage was, it was 40/60 in their taxes, because they're pilot programs. We all know that. And you don't need, there's no $50 million bond?
So Rita, I think it's best you call Joanne tomorrow, because your time is up, but just in summary, when the buildings are going up, they have the redevelopment area bonds that are paying for the infrastructure, and that's where this is being drawn down from. As the mayor said, we haven't had a lot of drawdowns recently, but there have been some. But Joanne can give you the exact number of where that is right now.
Okay. Who's keeping track of that? Do you order them?
No, Joanne, our CFO, whom you call often.
So we could call Joanne?
Yes, please.
All right, I will.
Okay, thank you. Seeing nobody else, I'll make a motion to close.
Second?
All in favor?
Oh, wait a second.
Are you still taking--
Yep, go ahead, Linda.
Oh, I thought it was going to be so--
No, go ahead, Linda.
Excuse me, I'm a little out of breath. I have about three things that I wanted to bring up.
Okay, just give us your name and address, please.
Oh, I forgot.
Okay.
Linda Leahy, 5th Avenue.
Thank you.
I have, I got this idea from a little silver. In the winter, when it snows, they have a sign-up sheet for some, any people who need help, like seniors or handicapped people, and then they have volunteers that go after a snowstorm, you know, and they shovel their walk in their driveway. And I thought that would be kind of a good idea for Asbury. I know I don't feel like shoveling anymore. And not only that, you shovel your sidewalk, but nobody walks on it. They walk in the street. So anyway, that was, that was one thing. And then the second thing is the speeders on 5th Avenue. I had this idea of either putting in speed bumps, which we really could use, or four-way stop signs. And they had a sign, that sign that tells you how fast you're going, and there were quite a few people didn't pay attention. There were quite a few that did, but I would say most of the people are pretty good, but some of them, they just start down here, and they really gun it all the way down to Locust. So I just thought that would be a good idea, four-way stop signs. They also could use something on Bridge Avenue or Bridge Street. They go pretty fast there, too. And, you know, people are living there, and they, some of them have small children. So, and then the third thing is the bicycles and the scooters, and people that don't play by the rules, if there are any rules. Am I coming through?
Yes.
Some of the people pull out right in front of you. There were three young girls that went down 5th Avenue at night on scooters, and two or three of them-- and two or three of them were right in the middle of the road. They don't, they don't pay any attention to the, what it says on the scooter about you have to wear a helmet. I haven't seen one person wear a helmet. My time up?
Yes. Finish your sentence.
Anyway, we have to watch the scooters and the bikes, you know, because there are, a lot of them are crazy. So...
Donna and Michael, you want to respond?
I'll respond to the two regarding traffic, I guess. Regarding the speeding on 5th Avenue, I can, if you want to leave your email, I can, we have results from the speed trailer, trailer that was out there. We have, is this on, testing? We have the results from that speed trailer that was out there, so I can email them to you if you would like. We can certainly look at all kinds of measures of traffic calming. Unfortunately, four-way stops are not a speed control device. There has to be an engineering study to see if they're warranted. And it's based on volume, the volume of traffic on the side street and the number of crashes that's recorded each year. But it's something we could look at. As far as bicycles and scooters, you know, I think with any mode of transportation, there's going to be folks who don't abide by the rules. That includes cars as well. We do have ambassadors now for the scooter program who are at high-volume locations to kind of instruct people the proper way to ride those vehicles. There is also on our website a number that you can call if you see someone reporting poorly. If you can get as much detail as possible about the rider, it goes to the company and they could suspend the account. And bikes and scooters in the middle of the road, that's perfectly legal under statute. Bikes and scooters are allowed to be in the street and share the road with, in the middle of the street, as long as they're going in the direction of traffic. That is perfectly legal under the statute. Yes.
Well, I just forgot about the man that was riding with a little girl, about four years old, down on the street.
On a scooter. Yeah, again, if you see that, if you see that and can report as much detail as possible, where, when, what time, and email that email address or phone number, that's at cityofasburypark.com/scooters. The vendor should be able to suspend the account.
And can we look into the idea of what Little Silver's doing?
Yeah, we can certainly set up a portal that people can sign up and we can make that information available to anyone interested in having their sidewalk shovel for free. Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a great idea, thank you. Appreciate it.
Motion. All in favor? The meeting is now closed to the public.
And Linda, I forgot, what Michael was saying about the scooters. I was talking to the scooters at one of the events and they put, it tore back to me, to one of the gentlemen that runs the scooters. They put decals with numbers on each scooter on each side. Now, if it's going past you fast, you won't see it, but if it's in front of your house, you will see it. If you call that in, they can take immediate action. So they're trying their best to make people behave. Some people are, some people aren't, but... Nope, nope. We close, close, exactly, I mean...
Is it closed?
Yeah, it's closed. Okay, good.
Okay, we are on to the minutes. I have the municipal council executive meeting of September 22nd, the municipal council executive meeting of September 28th, I have the municipal council regular meeting of September 28th, and the municipal council regular meeting of September 22nd. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are on to resolutions to be withdrawn. I have Resolution 2021-411, a resolution authorizing additional engineering and architectural services to T&amp;M Associates for the beach headquarters building modifications.
I'll make the motion to withdraw.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution is withdrawn. Resolution 2021-417, a resolution awarding a contract for the design of the central business district parking structure. And I'm looking for a motion to be withdrawn.
Move it to be withdrawn. Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are on to the consent agenda resolutions. We have Resolution 2021-423 through Resolution 2021-425. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
I think you left one out, 426?
I did, I did, I'm sorry. 426 is also in consent. Are we all in favor?
All in favor.
Thank you. We are on to individual resolutions. The first individual resolution is 2021-427, a resolution approving the payment of bills.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
The second resolution we have...
Melody, I'd like to suggest that you go to Resolution 429 first and then go to Resolution 428.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have Resolution 2021-429, a resolution adopting a corrective action plan in response to the recommendations contained in the 2020 report of audit. Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Two, Resolution 21-428, a resolution accepting the 2020 municipal audit. Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-430, a resolution authorizing an annual service agreement with Power DMS for the police department. Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-431, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Passport for a permit parking portal and license plate reader parking enforcement system. Do I have a motion? Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-432, a resolution awarding a contract to A-Tech Concrete for the boardwalk decking removal and replacement project.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-433, a resolution awarding a contract to Monmouth County for the milling and paving of various roads.
Move it.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-434, a resolution authorizing a two-year extension of the contract with Summertime Surf LLC regarding the operation of a seasonal concession involving surf lessons. Do I have...
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
No.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-435, a resolution authorizing a two-year extension of the contract with Sunshine Productions LLC, trading as Asbury Park Pedalboats, regarding the use of a designated area of the Wesley Lake in the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey, for the operation of a recreational pedal boat concession.
Move it.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-436, a resolution authorizing a two-year extension of the contract with Pimpco LLC regarding the operation of a seasonal concession to provide for the rental of umbrellas and beach chairs on the public beaches of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-437, a resolution authorizing a professional service contract to T&amp;M Associates for the new fire department headquarters.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
No.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-438, a resolution authorizing the purchase of printers for the parking pay station.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-439, a resolution authorizing the purchase of electrical supplies needed for the south boardwalk project. Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-440, a resolution authorizing the purchase of asphalt materials from Stavola Asphalt Company for the paving of various roadways.
Move it. Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-441, a resolution authorizing the purchase of software needed for the police body worn cameras.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-442, a resolution authorizing the emergency removal, delivery, and installation of new media needed at the wastewater treatment plant.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-443, a resolution approving change order number one for the RBC West Channel improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-444, a resolution authorizing the repairs of the influent pump number three at the sewer plant.
Move it. Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-445, a resolution adopting Mission Square Retirement as an additional vendor for the City of Asbury Park Deferred Compensation Plan.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-446, a resolution authorizing the purchase of asphalt materials from Stavola Asphalt Company for paving of various roadways with community development block grant funds, CDBG.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
No.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yep.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-447, a resolution authorizing payment to the Asbury Park Small Businesses through the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, CV Cares Act Fund.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-448, a resolution approving a person-to-person liquor license transfer of retail license number 130333-053 from Ygma Restaurant LLC, which is the Hotel Tides, to iconic Saint Lauren AP Drink LLC.
Move it.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-449, we're looking for a vote to withdraw a resolution of the City of Asbury Park authorizing the sale of certain city-owned property located at 45 Borden Avenue, Block 903, Lot 9, by open public sale to the highest bidder through sealed bid process.
Move to withdraw.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution withdrawn. Resolution 21-450, a resolution canceling balances of general capital and beach capital improvement authorizations.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-451, a resolution authorizing the purchase of electricity and natural gas supply service for public use on an online auction website.
Move it.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are on to ordinances for second reading, public hearing. The ordinance that we have up is Ordinance 2021-35, an ordinance establishing a restricted parking space for use by handicapped persons at property located at 1113 First Avenue in the City of Asbury Park and amending and supplementing Section 7-36 entitled Handicapped Parking of Chapter 7 Traffic of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Asbury Park. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public on Ordinance 2021-35?
Move it. Second.
All in favor? The public hearing is now open on Ordinance 21-35. If any members of the public would like to be heard, please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record. And all your comments must be about the ordinance being presented for public hearing.
CNN motion to close.
Second.
All in favor? The public hearing is now closed on Ordinance 21-35, a motion to adopt Ordinance 21-35. Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are on to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor? Meeting is now adjourned. Wow.